The March 19 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Mr. Trivett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang?
Here.
Mr. Pons?
Here.
Mayor Freiling?
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Here.
Ms. Ramsey?
Here.
First item on our agenda, and the only item on our agenda, are the budget presentations. The first of which is the Human Services Presentation. Mr. Wallantish.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Today we have with us our Advisory Board Chair, Sandra Lenthall, and another member, Susan Gennaro, who will divide the presentation between them. I will tell you this, I want to compliment our Advisory Board members for the very fine work, the time, the input that they provide. They review all the applications, they take them home, they tear them apart, they bring them back, and they'll explain the nuts and bolts of that process. But I also want to tell you that we have a very fiscal, responsible group of citizens on here who realize that local governments across the state and country are getting squeezed from all directions, and that the real issue is to look at what presents any type of cost savings and better working relationships in the community. So it's within that context that they're making these recommendations. I again want to thank them for the outstanding job that they've done on this. I'll turn this over to Ms. Lenthall.
Good afternoon, Ms. Lenthall and Ms. Gennaro.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, and members of City Council. Once again, we, the members of the city's Social Services Advisory Board, are pleased to be in the role of recommending fiscal year 2019 funding for our partner agencies who serve our city residents. To recap our considerations in determining our recommendations, here are the questions that we ask. One, does the agency provide both necessary and direct as well as non-duplicative services to city residents? Two, would the city or another agency have to provide the same services in entirety or in part? Should these not be available through the agency? Three, are the services prompt, accessible, and either free or on a slotting fee scale for city residents in need? Four, does the agency have a working relationship with the Human Services Department and its staff on a day-to-day or weekly basis? We also look at the accuracy of the unduplicated number of city residents served. Lately, we assess agency's stability through audits, et cetera, as well as its mission and purpose being in line with the City of Williamsburg's priorities and commitments to its students. Sue Gennaro will now review specific agency funding recommendations.
In the current fiscal year 2018, the city is funding a total of 13 outside agencies in the health and human services area that are reviewed by our committee. Please note that this does not include the Peninsula Health Department or court-related programs, which are formula-driven. Total funding in this category is $430,394, which you have before you on the Funding Grid Sheet. Of these, six agencies requested level funding, seven requested increases. Of these, our recommendation was to increase Peninsula Agency on Aging, which provides in-home nursing visits and elderly transportation, by $551; and Old Town Medical and Dental Center by $1,000, since both agencies offered the highest priority of services in the health or senior services area. Also, their numbers served were in line with the criteria we set forth at the beginning of this presentation. And since homelessness and homelessness prevention was next in line, given the priorities in the community today, the committee recommended that one new agency request be considered for fiscal year 2019. We recommend that 3E Restoration, which provides community wraparound services to city residents referred by city's outreach coordinator, also receive $1,000. 3E Restoration is a consortium of churches that have incorporated into a nonprofit agency with the lead being located in the city. This nonprofit has worked very closely with human services at either preventing homelessness and/or providing housing and to support family wraparound for each city resident or family in crises different lengths of time. And Sandra Lenthall will now summarize the funding recommendations for the fiscal year 2019.
Understanding that the city has a particularly tight budget facing it in 2019, our recommendations provide for a modest increase in funds amounting to $2,551 over the present year's allocation to the three nonprofits who deliver services to our citizens in the highest need categories, involving health, elder health, and transportation, and the city's vulnerable population that is at risk of homelessness. Lastly, we are also encouraging our nonprofits to work collaboratively with the city's Human Services Department to create a more effective service delivery system to our citizens at a greater cost savings during the upcoming year rather than seeking increases alone. We thank you once again for your consideration of our recommendations and would be pleased to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you. I'll come back to council for questions or comment?
No questions. Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you. Looks like you all have really taken a fine-tooth comb to the request and have spent a lot of time trying to come up with your recommendations, so thank you for that.
Thank you both for coming. No, there's no question that, you know, the services that taxpayers can help provide you all through the department go a long way. And through my professional life, I have some experience, you know, working with some of these agencies in housing, and there is a tremendous need. And so I really appreciate you all putting your efforts forward to make sure that we distribute these funds equitably, but where you see they need to be met, need to be. And so I really appreciate that. And I look forward to seeing what the city manager proposes to us in the budget and hope that we can get these few extra dollars to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you to Ms. Gennaro for your work and your effort. And please extend my enormous appreciation to the rest of your committee members and also to the famous Pete Wallantish for y'all's hard work on this. It's certainly not easy, given the tightening revenues that we see, or at least you don't have to necessarily be concerned with that. But for us to consider how the city can do to benefit the city, whether it's through these organizations or through other efforts, it's certainly not an easy task to do. It's great to see that certain other organizations, like 3E Restoration, has come on board and tried to tackle the pervasive cycle of homelessness in the Williamsburg area. And I guess I just have one question with that. When these organizations apply for grants, is it tied to a specific project that they're going for, or is it, it could be used for like operating expenses, or I guess just how is it done? So when 3E, for example, comes in, applies for their grant, is that tied to a specific project that they want to do, or?
I'll answer in brief, and Peter can back it up with more details. But usually, there is a specific request for an amount for something which will be done. So it's usually tied to something specific.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Usually. Peter, is that?
Yeah, just, it's on, right? To fine-tune that a little bit, we will look at what the major mission is of that agency and what is the, you know, primary purpose and the services provided. But generally, we don't restrict it to that. Now, I'll give you an example. Peninsula Agency on Aging, one of the two things that they know we look at, and it's case-specific to the agency, which Ms. Lenthall alluded to, is the two key things that they provide that we like, and we feel are very necessary, really, are the in-home nursing services they provide for our elderly who are aging in place. That's a key program there. And the rides program, which means they provide senior transportation for. And those are the two flagship programs that we say, yep, that's why they're up here on top of the priority list. But it does get down to case specifics with each agency.
Okay, thank you for fleshing that out. No further questions.
Yeah, I'd just like to add my appreciation to everyone for their efforts here. There's, it's very unlikely the council would ever have the ability on its own to do the amount of work that you do in looking at these agency requests, evaluating them, and then providing a thoughtful recommendation as to how the money should be allocated. It's true, we have tight revenues, but it's also unfortunately true that the needs within our community only grow with time. And so balancing that limited revenue stream with the overwhelming desire to help people who really need it within our community, those are tough decisions to make. And I know you approach it with thoughtfulness and compassion and experience that we greatly value. And I'll say the same thing on a different level to the Arts Commission, but they fulfill that same role for council. One thing I want to emphasize to anybody who might be looking at this, these spreadsheets that have very, very tiny print on them, is that if you can actually read the numbers, just because a request isn't funded, or a request is not fully funded, that does not in any way diminish the efforts of that organization, or it's not a sign that that organization isn't doing tremendous work within our community, it just doesn't necessarily fit the parameters that we need to put in place because of those limited funds. And a few years ago, I had a citizen raise the question of, why does the city support outside agencies in the human services field? You have a human services staff, an entire team of people. Why don't you just put the money there and let them do the work instead of taking my tax money and giving it to some nonprofit that I might not choose to give my money to? And Mr. Wallantish, I'm going to tell you what I answered, and I'd be happy to hear if your thoughts on this. And my response was that these agencies have an existing infrastructure. They have a knowledge base, a skill set, levels of connection within the community that it would be virtually impossible for our limited resources of the human services staff within the city to duplicate with twice the amount of money that we give, much less with the limited amount of money. So we're leveraging what they've already put in place, what they maintain with their overhead, and we're making a bigger difference by putting those dollars with the people who are experts in that area and allowing them to complement what staff does on a regular basis. Is that a fair assessment, sir?
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor, because in some cases, if we had to provide the services, they would not be as cost-effective. And that's the key, is what's the partnership there? And are the roles complementary between what we do as the core services in human services with the partner agency? And I will say, all of them are working very well with us. One quick comment on the electronic versions, there's a lot here, but we felt it was information you should see statistically. We were hoping you could blow the screen up to a larger print version, which I have to do anyway, but hopefully the public could do that as well.
Well, the small print's more a reference to my failing eyesight with age as opposed to the quality of print.
That makes two of us, Mr. Mayor.
So once again, thank you for everything. And the other point I would just like to emphasize is just because a request is, or I'm sorry, a recommendation is listed on the sheet, that is not final and that is not part of an approved budget. This is just a recommendation. We still have to go through the full process and probably have a lot of conversation before we come to a final answer. Last comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This takes us to the next presentation, which is the Arts Commission. And we have with us today Sally Wolf. Mr. Witt, will you be leading this off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's my honor to introduce Sally Wolf, who is the chairman of our Area Arts Commission this year. And to say, much as Peter said, that this group of volunteers worked very hard, and you've seen the size of the binder they take home to review and score, and we are in great hands with Sally, leading that effort to make this recommendation to council.
Thank you for having me today. My name is Sally Wolf. I serve as the chair of the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, which is comprised of nine citizen volunteers. As a city resident, I am joined by three other members, Bob Leek, Susan Branch Smith, and Patricia Rubline. Then we have four members from James City County, Tim Cavaness, Nick Vetros, Paige Bishop, and Arianna Heck. Our ninth member is from York County. His name is Charles Nurnberger. And we get very able assistance from Andrea Lamou. Each commissioner to the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission is assigned several local arts organizations. They establish a relationship with the leadership, they attend concerts, they attend performances, and they report back to the commission. This system of communication proved very valuable this year. Let me explain why. In the summer of 2017, it was announced that the Kimball Theater would be closing. As you might imagine, the Kimball was the preferred venue for many of our arts organizations. Just as an example, the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra performs there regularly. Fortunately, within a few weeks, a partnership with William &amp; Mary was announced, but it still created quite a challenge for our arts organizations. Plans were made, schedules were made, schedules were scrapped, schedules were made again. This uncertainty, along with the uncertainty of what's happening with PBK, we now know it's going to be closed for a couple of years, created a lot of challenges for our arts organizations this year. Throughout all of these changes, our commissioners continue to communicate with their organizations, coaching them on our submission requirements, and encouraging them to apply to the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission. But we also provided other alternatives for funding. For example, we provided our organizations with information on funding options through the Virginia Commission for the Arts. We wanted them to expand their vision of where they could go for arts funding. In addition to our usual activities of accepting grant proposals and determining how the budget should be allocated, this year the commission partnered with the Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Alliance, and we'd like to thank Karen and Bob for their assistance. It was probably not even a blip on their radar screen, but it was very important to the Arts Commission. We partnered with them because for years, the Arts Commission has required our arts organizations to provide calendar events, which we have loaded onto a calendar, which was very rarely seen or used by anyone. And by working with the Tourism Alliance, they have a robust calendar that was easily accessible. Our arts organizations were already using that venue, so we saw the opportunity to link our needs with the greater calendar that's being provided by the Chamber and Tourism Alliance. So let's call that a score for efficiency and common sense. This was sort of our third major initiative over the last several years. The first is that we completely renovated the way we accept applications. We automated that process. And the second was that we created policies and procedures. That seems like such a simple thing, but this year it became particularly important to have those procedures, both because we had three new commissioners from James City County, and we were able to use those procedures as an orientation for those new members. So how did the year turn out? We ended up with 31 applications. That is down slightly from prior years. This reflects some changes in our community. For instance, we no longer receive applications from the Virginia Shakespeare Festival because they are not putting out performances right now. And First Night is another example of an organization that we used to fund that no longer applies. Requests this year totaled just shy of $2,000, $210,000. In order to get into balance, we had to shave that by about 30 percent. So very, very few of our arts organizations received the level of funding that they request. As usual, the Arts Commission made our decisions based on an assumption of level funding from both the City of Williamsburg and James City County. But for the second year, we decided to ask, what if? What if the City of Williamsburg and James City County were to provide 5 percent more funding? How would we handle that? And likewise, what would we do if we were provided with less funding? This year, we made the decision to allocate any increase or decrease across the board. It would be a simple deduction. This is what we would do with level funding, plus 5 percent, minus 5 percent. At this point, we hope that that is simply an exercise, and that we can count on the City of Williamsburg and your counterparts in James City County to provide level funding. It would be a welcome bit of stability after a tough year. I'd like to thank the city for its support of the arts in our area, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners and volunteers for their hard work and dedication. And I welcome any questions you may have.
Questions? Again, you all do an awesome job, really, meeting the, A, meeting the basic needs of these organizations, but also dealing in an immense amount of detail. So I really appreciate your hypothetical projections in those two columns, 5 percent up, 5 percent down. I think that really makes it tangible for us what additional funding can do. Thank you.
And I would like to thank you also, and in looking at the spreadsheet and all the different organizations, I don't think the general population has any idea how many organizations there are in the area, and how blessed we are to have that many, and the impact that it has not only on the residents that are here, but in attracting people to move to Williamsburg, and also for tourists. As we've continuously talked, that we need more to offer for everyone. And I went to the last performance of the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, and we do have some jewels in our little town here. And thank you for putting all this together, and we hope that they're all able to stay. And when you mentioned the two that are no longer in the ask, are there any new organizations that you've been approached by or that you see on the horizon?
The year before last, we did have a couple of new organizations. One, we were able to fund, and that organization did not come back in the most immediate round. And two years ago, we also had a new organization that did not meet the criteria.
Okay.
You have to be a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
And without that designation, we didn't feel like we could fund them.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming and giving this a presentation. I concur with my fellow councilmen, members, councilwomen. The, you all do a lot, and there's a lot going on here, and it does afford us the opportunity to spread the money out. And I think, you know, tying on to Councilwoman Ramsey's point about, you know, the culture and arts and how that transcends in the tourism and visitation and overall economy, I think this is an important step to kind of bringing it, you know, all together and presenting it in a way that's a marketable, you know, destination driver for us, and so I appreciate that. I do see a couple of things in here, you know, for example, the "celebrate Yorktown." And not that I would advocate taking funds away, but I don't see York County as one of the funders on here. Is there an opportunity to reach out to them, or do you reach out to them, and is the answer no? How do we look when we go to them for funding?
Well, I don't know that we have ever asked York County, at least in my memory. I think this is my fifth year on the commission. I don't know that we've ever asked York County for support for the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission. They have their own county commission, which is a standalone entity. They do send a representative from York County to Williamsburg, and we do have regular interaction with them, but I don't know that there's a funding connection.
Maybe we ought to ask, because if we're sending some funds to York County, you know, for things outside of the greater, the Williamsburg area, which I do think includes, you know, at least Upper York, I mean, there's a, you know, Chamber and Tourism Alliance is a great example of that funding trio. You know, there's history there already, so you're not reinventing the wheel, so.
Sure.
It'd be nice to see some additional funds come in to support these activities, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf, for being here today and for presenting, and just want to echo what all my colleagues have said. This is quite impressive with the rubric and the formula that you have devised. I just have one question. In terms of the state challenge grant, are we, do we know for certain that that funding is not affected by the current budgetary stalemate in Richmond right now, or?
I would not say anything certain.
Okay.
Perhaps Michelle has better intel than I do. I...
Because I know some of the funds are carried over from previous fiscal years, but I just don't know if, I mean, are we for certain that we may expect this, or?
In the past, we've had pretty consistent funding from the state, but I don't think we can...
We'll not come without that.
We'll count those chickens when they're hatched.
And when would the public or your organization be expected to hear back from?
I don't know the schedule on that. Do you know when we receive notification from the?
I mean, it's just $9,000. It's not, nothing compared to the other $75,000, but just kind of curious because...
Right, so much as Barbara knows, as finance director, it will take the state budget being approved and blessed and coming back for us to know about several things, not just the Arts Commission, schools and other things as well. So it will be when the state budget is complete.
Okay, and just one more question for staff. Thank you again for your presentation. I know some line items here, you know, such as the 50th anniversary for the occasion for the arts, and also, let's see, the Virginia Art Festival events. Given that we have our incoming auspicious Tourism Development Fund that is still being, the policy's still being flushed out, would organizations be able to apply for both? Let's grant in both these funds, assuming, these are just special events. I'm taking now, most of the items I see on this is funding operating expenses and organizational stuff, but for the ones that are funding the special events, any idea? Or if not, might as well keep it as something to keep in mind as we continue fleshing out.
One thing I look at, looking at the applications they submit to the Art Commission versus the application they ask for tourism funding, often the purpose of the funding goes to two different things. An occasion for the arts or a Virginia Art Festival may need Arts Commission funding to work with youth in an educational environment, but then ask you for marketing money to bolster outside of that. It is provided in both places at times, depending on the request. Last year, Culture Fix was funded in the Art Commission. They also submitted an outside funding request. They were funded in one. So that is a prerogative that council always has. Councils should always consider the total support given to an organization, but also the purposes for those different areas of support.
Okay. That's all.
I think the important distinction there is whether it's the Tourism Development Fund, or EDA funding, or some other source of revenue that goes to an arts organization, that is more often than not, or most generally, to, as Mr. Collins said, market an event or take an event, or help create a new event that didn't previously exist, or take an existing event and expand it in a way that we believe would help generate more tourism activity in the marketplace, which isn't really the purview of what the Arts Commission is looking at. They're looking more at from a holistic community perspective of how does it impact the quality of life of the residents, the education of youngsters, appreciation of the arts? Is that...
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation.
Ms. Wolf, thanks to you and your fellow members of the Arts Commission, Mr. Leek, Ms. Branch Smith, Ms. Rubline, and everyone else who participates, as I mentioned, with the Human Services Group. It takes a whole lot off staff's plate and off council's plate. And I've got to commend you and the entire group for everything that you've done to create more efficiencies on, from the standpoint of filling out applications and the way you evaluate groups and everything in between, because I know it's not an easy job to do that when we've done things a certain way for a long time. I also want to take a moment here to thank the college for their flexibility with the Kimball Theater. There was some question when they first, when the whole Kimball issue arose about whether it would continue in operation, and many groups just thought they had no alternative. They had nowhere to go. And many expected that the college would be totally inflexible in that regard, but from everything I've heard, they have worked very hard to cooperate, to meet the needs of these groups as their calendars would allow, and to bring everything together in a way that really does help the members of this community. Your idea on partnering with the Chamber... Your idea on partnering with the Chamber in Tourism Alliance on the calendar is, I know it sounds like a simple thing, but that is so important. It is really hard to find one central place in this community for information on calendars related to anything, and the more we can integrate that, the better.
And they're doing a better job than we were, so...
So, I commend everybody on that. Probably a lot more calendars we could try to coordinate, but again, it's not as easy as it sounds on the surface. One thing I'd like to mention, though, is that, again, similarly with Human Services, just because we have an amount that's requested and an amount that's granted, that does not mean that the delta between the two in any way represents the difference between the need and the funds available, because many of the groups that you're working with have tailored their requests based upon what they know your capacity to fund is and the history they've had with you, and occasionally they may ask for a little bit more, which we certainly understand, but they're not going to go off the charts with a number that they know you're not going to be able to do. So, there are a lot of other terrific programs that people would like to do, that there's just, there just aren't resources available to make them possible. One thing I'd like for staff to think about going forward is whether or not there's a role for the Arts Commission or not in helping us understand what will be the impact in two more years, even, we know it's going to be an impact more so in the next couple of years, but even more so potentially in two years when the college's contract for the Kimball terminates. And what do we do? What can we do? Is there anything we can do? And maybe there's not, but we, if we can start thinking about that now, and I know there are other interested parties who are thinking about that within the community, but we've got some time. If we could do anything to make the best use of that, I think that would be time well spent. So, just want to say thank you again. Anything you'd like to close with?
I'd just like to say that among the commissioners, we are very tied into the various arts organizations. So, if we can act as a liaison between the city and those arts organizations, we'd be happy to fill that role.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time in however many years I've been on city council that we've actually been ahead on the agenda by the time we got to the third presentation. This brings us to the Greater Williamsburg Chamber in Tourism Alliance, Karen Riordan. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Was that an invitation for her to take up the balance of the...
No, I just wanted to point out that at one moment in time, we were ahead of schedule.
Try to keep that going. Thank you, Mayor Friling, and members of city council. I'm here today first and foremost to say thank you for your steadfast support of everything that we've been doing in tourism. As you know from the documents that we've submitted, the Chamber in Tourism Alliance this year is asking for flat funding on behalf of city council for the upcoming fiscal year. And I think if I had one message to leave you with, it would be that we believe that now is the time to keep our foot on the pedal and to stay steady and continue to fuel tourism and keep the momentum that we are building going. We have had some success in terms of rebranding our destination, which is never an easy thing to do, but we have fundamentally taken apart what the meaning is of Visit Williamsburg and have wrapped ourselves around this idea of having fun, whether that is playing a round of golf or going to see one of our amazing art performances here, or if that is engaging in other sports, or if that is buying a ticket to one of the top premier attractions that we have in the city and the destination overall. We're doing all of that with one goal in mind, and that goal is to inspire consideration for prospective visitors to come and choose us and not some of those other comparative destinations that we know are spending a lot of money waving their hands wildly in the air to try to get people to come to them. And we want to be seen as a preferred vacation place for multi-night leisure trip vacations. We'd love them to stay more than three days, but we'll take three days and three nights, or four days, or five days, or seven days. And I think the other big part of what, you know, we've been working on very hard is to truly be a year-round destination. It's very, very important that people see us as a viable place to come for vacation at this time of year in the spring, but also in our summer, in our peak season, in the fall, and again, in the winter. And so, that has been a really huge shift over the last couple of years, and we've just scratched the surface of what we believe we can do there. So, there's a lot more work to be done, and we feel like we need to just keep moving forward, learning as we go to optimize the programs we have, to make sure that we're investing the money that you provide to us as best we can to get the maximum number of people reached. And so, that messaging around fun, 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 the last time I was here in January, I showed you the videotape, is all about different ways that people have fun, and it is very varied, and so we need to really be showing that. We have really dialed up our public relations in social media to be getting more earned media. Some of you may have seen on Facebook just this past weekend, we had Eric the Travel Guy, who was at Colonial Williamsburg, who did a great piece that we have now at the Tourism Alliance taken and shared out and sent to thousands upon thousands of people, again, just to show yet another journalist, another person coming in to talk about all the fun that he had when he was in Williamsburg recently. We're also doing a lot and want to continue to in this next year to align what is our leisure consumer marketing efforts with conference tourism, which is really starting to show an uptick, which is very favorable for us, along with economic development strategies that Michelle and the whole team is working on, to not just be attracting visitors, but also use that visitation as a way to attract potential business entrepreneurs to come and settle here. And we need to continue, as the trends show us, to help our attractions, our restaurants, our lodging sector, as well as retail and our tasting trail partners, continue to deliver wow experiences. We are in an experiential economy now, and being good isn't good enough. We have to really be delivering a wow, and many of our attractions and many of our partners are doing that, but there's still opportunity to be doing more. And again, we need to be doing that in our marketing as well, to be showcasing that. One of the other big things that we are embarking on this year, it started just in the last month or two, and it's going to really come full force next week when our campaign really kicks off for spring, and that is this idea of personalizing our marketing. In the past, we really were not able to do that, but our new website, visitwilliamsburg.com, is now robust enough and has the ability through other software technology that we're using to actually tailor the message. So, if we're talking to someone in New Jersey and they want to come next winter at Christmas, and they want to come as a couples vacation, we can understand based on what they're researching that that's what they want, and that's the messaging we serve up to them. On the other hand, if it's a mom who's looking right now, last minute, trying to decide what she wants to do with the family for spring break, we can serve her up different messages. So, that's a really, really important development for us and not something that we were able to do just a couple of years ago, and we think it's going to really yield huge dividends for us. So, as I mentioned before, we want to fuel consumer marketing, and we're going to do that a number of different ways. We continue to do a lot at our visitor centers, working more closely with William &amp; Mary than ever before, to also be looking at our student orientation, our family weekend, all of those promotions, all of those opportunities to be touching parents and getting them to think about vacationing here and just spending more time in the destination and not just coming maybe once a year to visit their students. So, going to those consumer shows also is very, very important. That's an opportunity to be going, again, direct to thousands of consumers that may not have been to Williamsburg for many years and get them back here. And seasonal advertising is the bulk of what we spend our media dollars on. So, seasonal advertising is the spring arts campaign that you're seeing now that's just starting to hit. We've had advertising running just in the last couple of weeks, and then it will start to, you know, really build in the next few as we hit April in the spring break season. This is some examples of the campaign that we ran in October and November for fall arts. But again, these three campaigns, spring, fall, and Christmas in Williamsburg, make up the bulk of our media buy, so they're very, very important that we keep them going and get them stronger every single year to be bringing more people back at those shoulder seasons. And spring arts, as you know, is a fairly new endeavor. This is one of the newest things we've tried to do, kind of taking a page from the fall arts campaign. It's much more culinary focused now. We still have a lot of fine arts, and we have a lot of performing arts with the Virginia Symphony, the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, and opera in Williamsburg going strong, but we're putting more of a tilt towards culinary, which is why, as you know, we moved the Taste Festival into this April season. So, we're just, in fact, a month away, 30 days from today, we will kick off the Taste Festival and have that be our anchor culinary arts event, really to help solidify what we're doing in spring arts, with a lot of other things going on in April as well and into May. And then, as soon as May is finished, we're going to roll right into Fun House. I was able to see a few of you today as we kicked off a Fun House meeting today with Bruce Hornsby and the organizers from the Virginia Arts Festival, as that lineup is starting to come together, and we're seeing the ticket sales are very robust, and they're actually pacing well ahead of where they were this time in year one and year two. So, that's a really, really good sign. Some of that, of course, is the lineup, but some of it now is that people understand that there is a major music festival taking place in Williamsburg, Virginia in June. And so, each year, I think we're building, and as Bruce Hornsby said this morning, we're learning more and more about what works and how to market and what things are effective to get the maximum number of people here to buy tickets to that wonderful weekend festival. I want to just say one other thing about that, because some people have said that's a one-and-done, and I really don't believe that at all. I believe that the significance of Fun House is place-making. It is about identity. It is about having people from within our area, within the Commonwealth, but also outside along the Mid-Atlantic, starting to recognize that Williamsburg is a place for the performing arts as well as for the fine arts. That's a new identity for us, and that's not something that we have been readily identified with in the past, but it's really important to keep building that, so people will associate that with us as another reason to come here. Tasting Trail continues to roll along. As you know, some of our newest members are right here in the city. Amber Ox has been open now just for, you know, a few short months, not even a year, and is doing incredibly well. And we have just actually printed the new tasting trail map, which has a new passport feature in it, so that as visitors and locals come by and they take that brochure and that map, they actually are able to get a little bit of a passport stamp, which then, when they bring that to the next place on the trail, you know, shows that business that this member, you know, this customer has been already to say, to Ale Works, or has been to Virginia Beer Company, and now is coming to Amber Ox, and they are then eligible to win prizes as a result of that. So, it's just an incentive for people, again, to take some more time, hopefully stay a little longer in their destination, eat out some more, and try maybe two places on the tasting trail. So, we're really, really excited to see how that continues to expand very nicely for us. And it's not too soon, we're already working on fall arts. We believe, again, that we'll have over 100 events in that fall arts time period. And again, I think we've done a nice job over seven years to grow visitation. This year is particularly important because, as you know, an occasion for the arts will turn 50, so it's a big year for them. They're going to be looking to really pull, not just within the state, but really north and south along the entire East Coast, and it'll be part of our effort to make sure that people know about that 50th anniversary, as well as all the other fall arts that are going on in that timeframe. So, we're expecting a very robust visitation for fall this year based on that milestone event. And then, we hope to have Christmas in Williamsburg figures very soon for you, probably at the next meeting, but Christmas in Williamsburg continues to roll along as a very, very strong program, thanks to your support and the support of James City County and York County. Again, as Colonial Williamsburg has new activities, new programming, and we see the same from Bus Gardens, as well as Jamestown and Yorktown. There's just so many things for a visitor to do now at Christmas that literally did not exist five or six years ago, so it's become a very, very popular time, and we need to continue to build that and promote that for those people who have not heard about Christmas in Williamsburg yet, and there's still a lot of them out there. So, our work is not done in terms of promoting that. And growing sports Williamsburg, several of you were able to come to our sports forum a few weeks ago. We're really excited to see that we're really starting to diversify the sports overall. So, some new things that have come onto the docket just in the last two years. The fishing league is coming back again this year after having a very successful tournament here, which we're really excited about introducing that sport. Pickleball, which is kind of taking the area by storm with not just our locals, but also we're seeing travel teams come now. There are four tournaments that are already registered to be happening here in the pickleball world, and the brand new one is we've just landed a contract to hold a major bowling tournament, which is not a sport we've ever had before. So, we're continuing to look at ways that we can bring new sports to our destination. And the other very exciting thing is that our retention rate now on sports that we've been working with is extremely high. It's in the high 80 percentile. So, obviously, the LPGA, we can't claim credit for that. We'll give all credit to Escalante for successfully negotiating that new contract, but we certainly support that. But things like Rev 3, the triathlon, the National Softball Association, World Series, Triple Crown Baseball, the fact that they keep coming back tells us that they're extremely happy with the amenities, the service, the hospitality they're having here, and they're getting great feedback from the coaches and teams. So, that is a very, very good sign for us that we'll continue to retain those pieces of business while we add new business to the sports arena. In conference sales, we had a very good year last year. We want to continue to mine the Washington, D.C. market and the Raleigh, North Carolina market in particular. We believe that, we know that there is still a need for conference room nights, especially Monday through Thursday. That's kind of the toughest time for hoteliers to fill their rooms in that midweek, and conference is the ideal way to do that. So, we're working very closely with our partners in conference to try to bring more associations and more conferences to Williamsburg, and so far, we're off to a really good start. Our projection for this calendar year is that we'll have close to 50,000 room nights associated with conference this past year in the mid-'40s. So, again, we're already seeing a projected gain for this year. And then the same with groups. Talked with you about the Pennsylvania Bus Association. We're gearing up for that now. We'll again have hundreds of bus groups here in June. They're actually coming right before the Fun House Festival, so we're actually working on some new communications materials to see if we can convince some of those groups to stay an extra three or four days so that they would stay through the weekend of Fun House, and we think that we might be successful in generating more room nights that way and a longer length of stay for that particular group coming in mid-June. And reunions and weddings continue to be an area that we think has high potential for growth. We have more and more people that want to be booking the Alumni House and other places like that for their weddings, and then they're calling our organization, looking for leads as to where they might be able to hold their reception for their bridal party and for their destination honeymoon here. So, we want to continue to develop that, and your funding last year helped us for the first time put together a brochure specific to the weddings market. We had never actively specifically marketed that way before, and it's paying some dividends. And growing international visitation, we've had some nice success coming off of last year's group in Washington, D.C., and right now, we're working with our airports, specifically Newport News, Williamsburg, but even Norfolk and Richmond, and our friends at the Dulles Airport, where a lot of the international visitors come through that as a gateway to see if we can develop more groups that would come down through Richmond and then on to Williamsburg and stay here and be exposed to our area for the first time. So, our primary focus there will be the United Kingdom and France. Those are our two highest potential groups there. So, that is what we are focused on doing and delivering for the 2018-2019 fiscal timeframe. And again, we feel like we're getting a little bit of wind in our sails and getting some momentum on some of these programs, and we would ask respectfully for you to continue funding us so that we can move forward and continue to keep these programs as strong as possible. Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Just maybe a comment. Karen, I think one of the most important things you said was, "We've changed how we perceive ourselves." As a result, that changed, has changed image we show the rest of the world. That's, I think that's something that chambers should be proud of, and I know this body has made strides to make sure that happens. I think we're doing a much better job than we used to capturing what it is it means to live here and have a true authentic Williamsburg experience, and we're doing a better job sharing that with the outside world. Overall, no questions, just thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you, too, and I think I'm a poster child for the expanded versatile offerings we have, because I have friends coming in in April, and we designed the weekend for the Taste Festival, so we're doing that in addition to the art museum, and we're going to do the Bits and Bridle Tour with Colonial Williamsburg. The guys are going to play golf. The guys are going to play golf, and us gals will probably find a winery someplace to taste. So I think it's really nice having a lot of opportunities for people to come and experience while they're here. I was also in Charleston a couple weeks ago, and, you know, you go to Charleston and everyone talks about, "Well, where did you eat?" But I'm finding that you can have great restaurants and great food anywhere and everywhere in the country. And so I think our emphasis on culinary is starting to get that word out, too, that there's a lot of great places to eat and drink while we're here. And as far as the Fun House Fest, as soon as Alison Krauss was announced, I bought my tickets. My sister's coming to town for it. So again, just other examples of how people react to things that are happening here. And I remember last year when you gave a presentation, I'm not sure exactly when, you were talking about the benefit of new. And I'd like you just to speak on that, because it's great having promotion and marketing, but you have to have something to promote as well. So do you see anything, new product, new events, new trends that you feel we should be addressing?
You're absolutely right. I just came back from a trip to Boston doing a press tour, and as I met with journalists there, again, the first question they all asked was, "What's new in Williamsburg? Tell us what we can expect. What can we look forward to?" So of course, I talked about many of the things you just mentioned, what we've got going on with the Taste Festival. Bruce Hornsby, which many people did not know that this was his hometown, so they find that very intriguing, and the fact that he would help curate and produce a music festival in his hometown is a very powerful thing for people outside the Commonwealth. And so, again, it gave them a new dimension. They hadn't really thought about us as a place for great music. They hadn't really necessarily thought about us for a place with great food. So I think, again, their response was very similar in New York as well, and my colleague went to New York the week before, and the power of new continues to be bearing out, that they want to hear that. And again, it gives people a kind of new stimulus, a new reason to revisit a place that they already had fond memories of. And as well, for new people, for a lot of the millennials, they've said, "Oh, that was a place I'd heard about, but I've never been." So it becomes that jumping-off point to actually go to do that. As far as some of the things that we would like to see, obviously, we want to continue to see new sporting events. As I mentioned, we are looking at some very exciting things right now that, again, would capture the momentum that we have around cycling, which is something we've been looking at now for the last year, and we think there might be something in our grasp there, as well as with triathlon, which would be very, very exciting for us. And again, we, too, think that there needs to be some work and thought put into what does our performing arts venue scenario look like two years from now and five years from now when the lease is completed with William &amp; Mary around the Kimball, because we see that there's an increasing need and appetite by locals as well as by tourists for that kind of entertainment, and we need to just make sure that we have an opportunity to be able to keep showcasing the great arts organizations that we do have. So those are two things that are very much on our minds at the Tourism Alliance that we think, again, represent new news and could be major new initiatives that we would be working on to be able to bring to fruition in the next couple of years.
So it's facilities as well as events?
Absolutely, absolutely. New festivals, one of the conversations we've been having with our tourism partners is, you know, is there something that we do that is a major festival in the middle of the summer? You know, we tend to think of the summer as, well, that's our peak season, and we have Fourth of July, and we have lots of visitors here, but we have filled out the shoulder seasons with lots of great events and festivals. Is it time for us to actually look at a major festival that would happen sometime post Fourth of July, in July or early August? And we think the answer is yes. So we're still thinking about what that might be, and we'll want input from all of our tourism stakeholders, including council, but we think that that's something that is worthwhile to be working on. Thank you.
Karen, thanks for coming, and as usual, I agree with many of the points that Ms. Ramsey just brought up, and to your point about rebranding Williamsburg. Who are we? Because I think we realize we have to be more, and we have to have new. And while we have great, you know, world-class institutions in Colonial Williamsburg and Bus Gardens and Jamestown, Yorktown, those are phenomenal assets in the community, but we need to showcase some other stuff. And I think what you're doing in terms of that rebranding is very important, and so I look forward to seeing more of that. I do have just one thought. You talk about the three shoulder seasons, spring, fall, and winter. I wonder if the term "arts" isn't too narrow of a label to put out there. Like, we have Christmas in Williamsburg. That could mean so many things, but, you know, spring arts, fall arts, you know, why not just, you know, Williamsburg in the fall and Williamsburg in the spring? And I think that would speak to, you know, a much broader audience than just the term "arts," so.
Good idea.
Bring it to Williamsburg.
That's right. So for whatever that's worth.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you so much, Karen. I think you and your staff ought to be complimented for all the work that you've done this past year and for years prior as well, for all you've done for our city. Evidently, you gave a very detailed presentation. Not going to delve back into it, but thank you for that presentation. I just recall one conversation I had this past weekend at the Amber Ox with a friend who's, who throughout his childhood has come back, his family has visited Williamsburg from time to time, and now he's a graduate student. And it was interesting, because we're talking about other towns like Charleston, Raleigh, and all of that, and he mentioned, he tried to offer a critique saying that, you know, Williamsburg is, they've got all these great amenities, it's become, you know, more millennial-friendly, but it seemed like it's still trying to shape what its identity is. Yeah, it's, you know, Charleston, he mentioned, will always be known for what Charleston has had, but in Williamsburg, you know, he didn't quite grasp what it is yet, and I had to counter him, because being the relentless cheerleader of the city that I am, I think it's kind of a testament to what you're saying. We're through that process, we're going through that process, and I have not forgotten what you've presented last year when you tried to, when you brought out, I think, the phrase words of "being innovative and having fun," right? And I think that is exactly what you're doing. We're going that direction, and I am just also quite appreciative of what you have done as well. So thank you.
Ms. Irden, thank you very much. Happy to hear about the willingness to think about investment in the summer season for bolstering, and we've seen an erosion over the past many years, and we can't take the summer for granted. We can't take any season, we can't take anything for granted. So I very much appreciate that. And I just want to emphasize the point you made about Fun House Fest and Bruce Hornsby's willingness to curate this event. It should not be lost on us, that there aren't very many communities of our size that have the luxury of somebody of his experience and connections within the community, because he can convey an enthusiasm, a passion, and a knowledge about this place to other artists that we could never hire somebody who could do half as good a job as he can do at that. So really looking forward to the lineup this year. And Mr. Foster, you used the term "authentic," and that's kind of what comes to mind for me when I think about Bruce Hornsby and Fun House Fest. And it's also why having homegrown culinary arts are so important to this community, whether it's the restaurant scene or the beverage scene, because in this world where anybody can get anything anywhere, there are some things that you can only find in the places where they are made, and that's what's going to help make this destination more interesting to people, not only to come for the first time, not only to stay longer, but then to come back, because they will hopefully realize and understand that they haven't been able to do anything. Christmas in Williamsburg, the parade, I know we've had the conversation before about, wouldn't it be great if we could do the parade at night? And I know your thoughts on that topic, but I'd just like to mention it one more time, because we always lack things to do in the evening. But the other is, have we given any consideration to some form of gathering spot or festival at the terminal point of the parade? So that it's a place for all the participants in the parade, the families who are picking up the youngsters, and all the people lining the parade route to then migrate to, to have some kind of bigger, greater Christmas event until the rest of a very busy weekend kicks in, because it is a very busy weekend. So that's just something to think about. On sports tourism, it confuses me a little bit or amazes me, but some people don't see the value in that. And just as an anecdotal example, I belong to a running group that participated in a variety of running events this past weekend in Virginia Beach. So it's only an hour down the road. Probably 30 people went down for the entire weekend, got hotel rooms, had events, ate out at restaurants, and spent a fair amount of money. And they live here. When you can bring people in from out of town to a destination that has as much to do as we have to offer in Williamsburg, the temptation for families and others to come and spend a longer period of time, and they tend to have more discretionary income because they have the ability to take on these sports or hobbies that aren't inexpensive to do, it's just really good for the tourism industry. I will shy away from my reference to Mr. Pons as a spokesperson for the bowling tournament, but I did want to also mention about conference sales.
I'll be willing to do it.
Conference sales does not just benefit conference hotels, and you can speak to this probably as well as anybody. They create a base of occupancy in the community that then all the leisure or other transient demand adds on to and filters throughout the community. Do you have any idea why we're seeing an increase in advanced bookings and interest?
There's been a couple of factors, and I will say that we have been aggressively marketing in North Carolina, and North Carolina's loss has been Virginia's gain in general and Williamsburg's in particular. So I think, again, there have been a number of groups who just have not felt that North Carolina was friendly and that they had some black eyes in terms of image, and they decided to move their business elsewhere. And so we were, you know, we received a second look, so that has been a part of it. But I think overall, the, you know, the reputation has been very good. So the people who are planning the conferences have, once again, had very good feedback from their guests, that it was a strong conference and the amenities were excellent and the participants all had a really good time. Again, they like being in Williamsburg, because even though they may go to a three-day conference, they like that chance to maybe come in a day early, stay a day later, so that they can go to the spa, go to the winery, do some shopping, do those extra things. And as you said, it doesn't just benefit that conference hotel, whoever is fortunate enough to win that, because these folks are going out to eat in the evenings, they're doing other things, because they are given free time over the course of that conference. So it does actually help retail as well as food and beverage. So it's, again, it's a rising tide that's been lifting, you know, all boats there. So we are happy to see that particular trend, and we're trying to jump on it and continue to see if we can book more of that business.
One last question about bus tours. From my past experience, one of the biggest challenges with bus tours is having information far enough in advance to allow them to plan, to market the program that they are going to then try to sell, which they have to fill and then bring down. And sometimes our calendars aren't that complete early enough. Is that an issue for us, or have we overcome that as a destination?
I believe we've overcome that as a destination at this point, and again, we're working out on some of these bigger groups that are student groups or religious groups about 15 months out. And so that's why we are trying to keep our community calendar as up-to-date as possible, but also looking within the tourism industry and other things that we have booked so that we know, and working very closely, again, with our partners to make sure that they can accommodate those groups. So, you know, group and conference is a team sport. We actually have to work really, really closely with the participating tourism partners to kind of say, "We're going to all go in to get this piece of business," and then it works out really well. So we've kind of overcome that issue of missing that cycle, but we are working 15 to 18 months out to get things. So right now, 18 is, I wouldn't say it's completely booked. We'll still pick up some business, but we're working on 19 and 2020.
Well, thanks to you and for everybody at the Chamber and Tourism Alliance for all that you do for this community. Last questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Mine's a 20-pounder, by the way.
And we have now successfully gotten behind schedule. So this takes us to the last presentation, which is the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Foster at this point. As an employee of the foundation, it's probably not appropriate for me to participate in this conversation.
Ms. Sardone.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Freiling, even though you are recused at this point. Members of council, as Mayor Freiling said, I'm Andrea Sardone, I'm the Director of Marketing at the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our request for 2018 destination marketing funds. I think one of the things to consider is that as the economy picks up and more money is in people's pockets, they get to make choices. It becomes now a buyer's market. We're competing against very well-funded destinations, and your support are critical to our efforts as almost a destination within the destination to appeal to people, appeal to different people, and to really fight for their hard-earned, for their money, for the dollars in their pockets. So your support and ongoing support is critical to our ability to tell America's enduring story. If I can do this. I'd like to give you just kind of a brief recap into 2017 numbers. 2017 was a very busy year for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. Our total website traffic was topped nearly over 3.8 million, and we were quite pleased to see that our website traffic to ticket purchase pages increased by 37%. This signaled to us a renewed, our renewed focus on the core experience, and by that I mean the historic area and museums. Our messaging is really resonating with people, that we are making the connection to them, and then they're traveling to those ticket pages to buy tickets. So we were very pleased with that activity. Our mobile app, we had over 304,000 sessions on our mobile app, and our two biggest days were obviously July 4th and Grand Illumination. Those were our two biggest days where we have the most people packed in probably the smallest space possible. But the mobile app's success is signaling to us that we are keeping pace with the more connected world, that we are able to provide products and experiences for people as they go more mobile. So I think, you know, we have more things planned for our mobile app, and I hope all of you have downloaded it and are using it. We increased our audience base in 2017. We increased our email subscribers, 22,600 people we added to our email roster, and that's about a 200% increase over the previous year. And we had, we added almost 37,000 new social media followers. So we are able to reach more people, obviously digitally, we can reach more people, and we know that we're reaching more people outside of our usual sort of drive-time places. So we're actually reaching people outside of our traditional drive-time markets, and that's good for us, as, you know, we work closely with the destination, providing more opportunities for things, for more things in the destination. We feel that we're getting some good coverage there. And our best metric that we're quite proud of is that we saw a 3% increase in total tickets sold in 2017, so we're very proud of those efforts. We also had a number of highlights, and I think this is, you know, just a snapshot. We were able to get the coveted five-star, I'm sorry, five-diamond rating from AAA, and that puts us in about the top 0.5% of all the AAA-rated hotels. Earlier this year, so this is not a 2017 highlight, but all the work in 2017, we received the Forbes Fifth Star for the Williamsburg Inn, and that is a reflection and an outcome of some really hard work of the team at Colonial Williamsburg led by our hospitality group. So we believe that that fifth star is going to do a lot for the destination and can really put us on the map, or put us back on the map to get more people here. We launched some new activities in the historic area. Patriots at Play was a pilot last year. Now it's a very, very popular program for children and their parents. The Axe Range is coming back, so people will be able to try their skill at throwing an axe. And then we have a lot of other new programs, and we just had our spring preview days last, late last week, and the marketing team attended those, and there's a lot of really interesting new programming coming to the historic area and the museums. We introduced five new nation builders. Clementine Arind, Anne Wager, the Young Galwan Pamphlet, Aggie of Turkey Island, and Edith Combo join our usual top builders, George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison. And these new nation builders are different, and they're much more diverse, and I think that the stories that they tell, the experiences that they tell, really underscore the foundation, CW's commitment to diversity in telling more stories of Native Americans, of African-Americans, and of free and enslaved people. So that's, we're really excited to have some diversity in our nation builders. Oops, sorry, I have a couple more things. Liberty Lounge was a very popular place for our active and retired military servicemen and women. We served over 85,000 last year, and earlier this year, we topped 100,000, and so the number keeps growing. And this is a spot that Elizabeth Reese is quite involved in, and it's something that the foundation... the foundation is going to continue its commitment to our military servicemen and women, and it offers a nice respite for people to stop in, get something to drink, kind of take it easy, and really sort of a payback for the service that they've given us. Our marketing priorities, we want to maintain visibility and relevance to the audience and use a steady drumbeat of our earned and owned activities. Our priorities, number one is to make every dollar count. We take very seriously the resources that council affords us, the resources that are very active donors, all the resources that we have, we are taking very seriously, and so we will make sure that every dollar counts. We're going to maximize our investment, so we're going to reuse our 2017 campaign of Take Time to Go Back. We saw that it really resonated and had some good appeal, and so we're going to reuse that. We're going to make some changes here and there, but we think that it is strong enough where we can use that investment and make that investment go a little bit further for us this year. Obviously, we will work very collaboratively with our destination partners, WADMAC, the Chamber, the Alliance, we work very closely with them. We understand that, you know, Colonial Williamsburg is part of a greater offer for Greater Williamsburg, and so we want to make sure that whatever we do, we can complement what else, the other things that are going on in the destination, and really sort of leverage everything that there is to offer. And then we will use data and research to focus and refine our efforts. We've had some very good research that came out last year that WADMAC funded. We have some destination research that we've used over the last three years, and we're continuing to learn from that. So we will make sure that any decision that we make will be grounded in some solid data and some good research. Speaking of those research findings, I wanted to just touch on four things that we found. We pulled from about three or four reports. We pulled out about four key things in the research that we're going to use to focus our efforts in marketing. One of them is this idea that, you know, Karen's talked about, and this idea of fun. And, you know, I think history is fun. I think everybody that works at CW thinks history is fun. Our job is to convey to people that it can be fun. So what we're going to do, we're going to show more of the fun. I mean, Patriots at Play, some of the new programming is really just kind of fun. It's a very sort of interactive experience that people have with our interpreters, and so we'll show more of the fun. Understanding that fun can also mean new and different, and we're going to have a number of new programs, we'll do some pilots, we'll experiment, and to really tell people, you know, this is something new, and really sort of call those things out. The perception of value, as I said, people will have more money in their pockets as the economy gets better. That doesn't mean that they still don't want to spend it wisely. We know that a family of four, I mean, it can be an expensive, it can be an expensive venture. So we want to make sure that people understand what they're getting for that cost of a ticket, and what they're getting as part of that experience. And so we're really going to make it very transparent and for people to understand that, you know, you get a whole lot of stuff when you buy a ticket to Williamsburg. And we're also going to become very clear with, you know, you're supporting historic preservation as well, which is very important. And then the barriers to commitment, people come here, they fall in love with the place. The problem is getting people to come here in the first place. And so that is, we are making it very clear what you get. We're not Monticello, where it's people, we're Thomas Jefferson's house, or we're not Mount Vernon, that's George Washington's house. You know, when we ask what is Colonial Williamsburg, it can be 50 things, and they can all be 50 great things, but we don't have the attention span, the consumer's attention span is not that long. So we're going to make it very clear what you get when you come and what the Colonial Williamsburg experience is. This chart just shows you that, you know, and you probably know this yourselves, you have email accounts, you have social media, you have all sorts of ways that you get information and learn about something that you want to do. This chart just shows sort of how we think about this, all the activities that we will engage in, and how these will be sort of more seasonal. So we get different people at different times of the year. Spring season, we're getting ready for parents with children, obviously, spring break. Late spring, early summer, we'll see young couples. Summer will be everybody. Fall holiday will be older couples, and winter is seniors. It's not that we will only market to those groups. We'll just pick a primary and, you know, really sort of tailor our messaging to those people, because those are the predominant people that attend. Our strategic priorities are developed in concert with our destination partners, obviously, and we use research in our planning and execution. And as I said earlier, we will make every dollar count, and so what that means is that we're going to make some decisions based what we believe are sort of the people that will present the highest revenue potential for the region, for the Williamsburg, Greater Williamsburg area. We want to make sure that, you know, we fish where the fish are. We want to make sure that the people that come here, that our dollars are spent ensuring that we're going to get the right return. So we're going to use data, we're going to use research, we're going to continue to analyze the people that come here. We have a weekly dashboard that we look at, that we're going to use throughout the foundation to really help us inform and to know that the investments that we're making are paying off. And we'll make adjustments. If things are not going the right way, we will make the necessary adjustments to make those changes. This chart is, we analyzed about four years of our customer data, and we were able to create three separate buckets of the types of people that come to Colonial Williamsburg. And so we took, we have these sort of, they're called our personas, and we gave them names. These aren't real people, these are just stock images, we just made up names. But what we did was we analyzed what their behaviors are, and then we used a company to help us sort of form sort of a more full picture of who they are, and that helps us with our marketing. If we know that our destination partners have something, we'll add that in. So you'll see that we have three typical types of customers, Linda, Jen, and Bob. When we do our messaging, we think about these people, it's like, okay, what would Linda want to do? Or what else would Linda want to do? You see Linda likes, she likes to explore, she likes different things, so I think the Greater Williamsburg destination and its attractions, we'll make sure that we tailor those offerings to these types of people. Our campaign platform, as I said, we're going to reuse Take Time to Go Back, and we've refined it a little bit. We want to tell people to take time to go back and be transported to the 18th century, the dawn of new ideas and culture and governing of American art and craftsmanship, and our journey to freedom. Take time to enjoy and share a fun and memorable experience with loved ones of every age. And take time to indulge your curiosity and discover new and exciting things that can only be found at Colonial Williamsburg. We want to use this platform as an invitation for people to share their experience with loved ones, to allow themselves to indulge their curiosity and to discover new and exciting things. We think this gives us a lot of ways to go and to expand into those three personas and really sort of give them invitations. So we'll push past being merely educational, we'll be immersive and transformative, we'll assure audiences that their time here will be well-spent, it's a fun experience that they can enjoy with their family at their own pace, and we'll entice audiences by tapping interest areas and offering new and unexpected experiences to returning visitors. So this will be the lens, this is the focus of our messaging, and to really try to continue to extend this messaging to people, to compel them to come. So our request, we will use, we will use council's, city's resources to, and combine it with the foundation resources on initiatives that have the greatest interest to reach your identified market segments, and leverage our public relations and social media to amplify our advertising. We would leverage these investments, expand and reach new, create new fans of historic tourism, and the multitude of cultural entertainment offerings our community has to offer, which we've obviously heard about, there's a lot. We're going to invest in our core, key, key core drive markets and do integrated marketing to expand the reach of Colonial Williamsburg and generate more demand for the Greater Williamsburg area. And we're going to manage our 2018 requests closely with our destination partners, again, making every dollar count. As I said, competition is fierce. Your investment will allow us to stay in front of more people and get in front of more people and compel them to come here. Thank you very much for your time. Happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and as I was commenting before with Karen's presentation, I'm all about new and expansion, and I can't wait for the art museum to be expanded and finished, because every time I go, I see something there that draws me back. And when you were talking about the spring preview, I guess that is something that is shown to the staff and the employees?
Yes, it's an internal, couple days, just to show staff and employees what programming is coming up. We actually just produced a new video, if you go to our Facebook page or go to our website, of what's new. So we actually just launched that on Friday. So it shows what's new, what's different, what's, you know, the good stuff that's coming back. So we know that that matters, that, you know, people that say, oh, yes, I went there when I was, you know, in fifth grade, nothing new, there's nothing new there. That's one of our biggest comments that we hear, like, well, nothing's changed. Thomas Jefferson is still Thomas Jefferson, those sorts of things. And so, you know, we beg to differ, and so we produced a video this year that really shows what's new in the historic area, the museums, and our hospitality offerings, because they've done a tremendous job at sort of just completely overhauling our hospitality offerings.
Well, that's good to know. I'll try and find it on the website, right? I'm not so good on Facebook, but, you know, a lot of the reason that people retire to Williamsburg is because of Colonial Williamsburg, and I think that the residents here are some of the best ambassadors for the community and for CW, and knowing that that's available and out there that they can share with relatives and friends, I think, would be helpful.
That's exactly what we want them to do. We want them to share it out.
And will most of them find out that it's on there through, what, just by going to the website, or will there be something?
We mailed the video to everybody that we have in our email database.
Oh, okay.
So if you are an email, if you have subscribed to us through email, you got it in your email, you got the link. If you come to our Facebook or any of our social media channels, you can get it that way. Website, obviously, and I believe, trying to think, there was one other thing. There's another place that we actually put it. We're trying to put it on every sort of place that allows us to put that link, so if you don't get it, let me know.
Okay, well, I'll go to the website and try and find it. And as far as looking at sort of new areas for reaching people, I think I saw something about looking outside of the core drive area, and Karen had mentioned too about international travel. I didn't know if that was an expanded approach for Colonial Williamsburg as well.
Our, I mean, you know, everything is obviously
On the table, yeah.
Fair game. You know, right now, our advertising reach is limited by resources. Certainly, social media can help us to that, toward that end. Advertising, you know, outside of the United States, I mean, we can certainly do things digitally, but we don't really have any sort of consistent campaigns going on outside the U.S. We'd love to do that. My personal opinion, I'd like to own the East Coast before we go anyplace else.
Yeah, makes sense.
You know, we are encouraged to hear that, you know, some airlines are putting in some flights, some direct flights into Richmond, so we'll certainly take advantage of, you know, anything, anything that does that. So we have ways to sort of serve different homepages to different populations, so we'll definitely take advantage of anything possible to get outside and to get more people here. The farther they come, we know from the research, the more interested they are in history. So hopefully, you know, we could get them here, if they're, you know, coming from far, stay in one of our hotels, really sort of make, you know, a good experience for them.
And one last question, can you speak to, because I don't know, but I know it's done, how the awards and the recognitions sort of pop up when people are searching for things, and the value of, you know, like by being a five-star or five-diamond, whether people would go online and say, bring up all of the five-diamond ones, and some of the search capabilities that
Yeah, certainly, if you search Forbes five-star, five diamond, five-star hotels, I mean, we will come up eventually. I mean, that's a Forbes, that's a function of Forbes. But yes, I mean, so you can definitely search AAA, five-diamond, Forbes five-star, you will get our, you will get our listing. The magic is, and then you go to that site, and then through pixeling cookies, then you'll start seeing ads. And so I know that our hospitality colleagues are doing those sorts of things. So if you come to the site, you get pixeled, you get cookieed, and then you'll start seeing ads. So yes, that will definitely happen. I just, I mean, it's a function of Forbes updating their site and having, you know, Google index it as well. But we will, we will make, we will get as much mileage out of that as we can, because that's a huge thing for it. It's a huge win.
Thank you.
Andrea, thank you for coming and representing Colonial Williamsburg in this presentation. Wow, you guys are doing a lot. You know, just getting the fifth star at the end is an amazing achievement, and, you know, it says a lot beyond just making the investment, but the staff that make that possible. It's a lot of hard work and, you know, a lot of due diligence to maintain it. It's easy to lose, it's hard to get it. So congratulations on that. You know, congratulations on also, you know, realizing that you've got to be new, you've got to introduce new things to the consumers to bring them back. And I know in an organization such as Colonial Williamsburg, change is hard. And I was talking to a neighbor the other day, he says, I just can't believe what they're doing. But you've got to change. Customers change. Consumers' expectations are different than they were, you know, 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, when you owned, when Colonial Williamsburg owned the East Coast. So we've got to get that back, and it's going to, you know, it's going to take all of us to do that. And I think, again, to a couple of things that brought my, to my attention, you know, Fourth of July, Grand Illumination, where we bring a lot of people to town that, you know, take, spend money all around town, not just with Colonial Williamsburg, but that's a valuable partnership that, as much as we, but something that you all do that the whole town benefits from, and partnering with the Hornsby Fest and allowing the Big Ten, you know, two days of activities in front of the DeWitt Wallace Galleries, you know, is, you know, a commitment to the community, and I appreciate that. A couple of years ago, Dr. Reese had said that we contributed roughly 20 percent of your marketing budget. Is that about the case today, or?
No, it's not. I mean, we definitely have, you know, with our changes last year, I mean, we, everybody took budget cuts. I don't have the number off the top of my head, I can get that for you. Your investment would be a significant part of it. I mean, it's probably the single largest investment other than the foundation. I mean, those are the two, the two sources of our marketing funds are the foundation and city council, or city investment. It is critical that, you know, that we get your funding.
Yeah, well, I don't think that that's in jeopardy, but I think, you know, seeing the 3 percent increase in ticket sales, and, you know, while we've seen some other revenue indicators remain flat, I know that that's not anybody's goal. We all want to see growth in these numbers, and hopefully with some of the changes that you all are doing, changes we're seeing in rebranding at the Alliance and just general, you know, new life, the way I see it. Growth in the economy, we'll see more people coming, so, you know, again, going back to Ms. Ramsey, reminded me about the ambassadors, you know. We are ambassadors all in Williamsburg, and we all, you know, owe it to ourselves to make sure that we communicate that to all of our friends and families, you know, instead of going to, you know, the Outer Banks for Christmas, come to Williamsburg.
Right.
But thank you, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Andrea, thank you for your presentation. I concur with my colleagues with all their comments so far, and wanted to add some of my own observations. When you were giving your presentation, I couldn't help but reflect back to what brought me to the city of Williamsburg. Some folks would easily point to the college, which is true, but when I toured colleges, it was Colonial Williamsburg that really captured my heart. So Colonial Williamsburg has a very special place in my heart, and, you know, even as So Colonial Williamsburg has a very special place in my heart, and, you know, even as a resident now and also a graduate student, I enjoy taking walks in the very nice and very open Duke of Gloucester Street, participating in special events, and very appreciative of what you all have done as being community partners, especially for the Fun House Fest that was mentioned before. Congratulations on the achievements on social media, that's always very impressive, and also with your ticket sales, as Councilman Ponce has mentioned, that's very positive revenue indicators for at least this side and the marketing side. And I absolutely believe that every dollar counts, and I believe that you are fulfilling that mantra. I do have two questions, though. For, one, if you don't mind, if I can kindly ask you to go back to the prototypical customers.
I can get there?
Slide, yep, that one. Let me preface this question by just, you know, what you were saying before, that the foundation is committed to diversity, and also, as we know, this nation is changing a lot. Some of the central conversations we're having in our culture is also reflective in changing views, like, that was prefaced before. But I'm kind of curious about how the foundation has been utilizing some of that marketing money in attracting people of color among different ethnic classifications. So can you speak a little bit into that? Are there data that you may be willing to expand upon? Just anything you'd be willing to offer, because, you know, I look at that profile, and I'm just curious.
No, it's a very good observation, and so, again, this is a reflection of the customer data for about four years.
Sure, it's just data, right, right.
So this is, so four years, this is who's coming. It's not who we want to keep coming. I mean, obviously, we want these, but we want more. We are using, we've gotten some anecdotal information just from people who, you know, last year, they saw more people, more diverse people on the streets. We don't ask for people's ethnic makeup. We don't ask, you know, we, so we have to sort of eye it. One of the things that we are very committed to, we are using more diverse people in our advertising. So you'll see more people of color, different types of people. So we definitely can do that. We started that last year, and, you know, I can't say, well, because of that, we got more diverse people, but we definitely will use more people there, our social media outreach. We'll talk more about, and I think our new nation builders that are very diverse, I think that's going to go a long way. We have some of our new nation builders, they're enslaved people, and it's telling those stories. And so, you know, to really sort of be upfront and talk about these things and invite people in to have those kinds of conversations. One of the things that our PR partners have talked about is that, you know, in the sort of, you know, heightened climate of people talk, people don't talk to each other, they just yell. And actually, what you can do is come to Colonial Williamsburg and have a very good conversation about race and identity politics. And, you know, it's not going to be a yelling match. I mean, you can sit down and really talk with James Armistead Lafayette, who play, who is played by Stephen Seals. He will talk to you about slavery. He will talk to you about, you know, issues like that. You can't have that conversation other places. You know, so you can have a very measured conversation that way. So we're going to make sure that we communicate that to people. We actually have had people that, you know, is Colonial Williamsburg a welcoming place? We are going to show more diversity in our advertising, on our website, email marketing. So that is the way that we can do that right now at this budget, at this budget line. We would certainly love to have the resources to do very extended campaigns, but it's just right now, it's a budget limitation. So, I mean, my team is very creative at trying to figure out, okay, well, how do we do that? Okay, we're not going to get the money, but how do we do it anyway? So we will try, you know, different things, and, you know, A/B testing, I mean, all those sorts of things that digital can now afford to us, we're going to be doing that, we see what resonates. One of the things that, you know, we had, we did do a campaign in the Washington Post for Black History Month, and we were featuring, you know, some of our new nation builders and really sort of talking about, you know, those very personal stories. And so I think the more we can show people and, you know, engage people, our social media and our PR teams are really great at, you know, sort of doing pitches and really sort of trying to engage people in those stories. But it's a, it's a very good point that you make, and it's something that I hope next year I can come back and say, you know, we are changing the tide at CW.
Right, and it's not necessarily a gotcha
Oh, no, no, I agree, yeah.
What the reason, one of the main reasons why I brought it up is because, in speaking to some of my friends who work at Monticello and Mount Vernon, this is not just, you know, an isolated incident for Colonial Williamsburg, it's happening throughout all these historic attractions. I was kind of wondering how that marketing campaigns were going. I guess for the other competitors, or whatever you consider competitors, do they have just a separate line item in terms of just marketing, in terms of diversity, folks of color, or, I mean, how big, how big are we talking about when we're comparing to?
Yeah, I mean, Karen might have a better handle on that. I mean, you know, marketing budgets are very closely held, people don't do that. I would venture to say the answer is yes, I would kind of qualify it. I know that our destination competitors are very well, you know, resourced. Disney, let's just take Disney World, I mean, not a real competitor, but if you think about, you know, they have a whole campaign to gay, lesbian outreach to get married there. I mean, there's, there's very, very specific outreach kind of campaigns that way. I can't really tell you about Monticello, you know, or Mount Vernon, what they do, but I do know that it is something that's on the minds of every marketer, you know, sort of historic tourism sites. But it's, it's a function, I mean, much of it is a function of resources.
In terms of, just a last question, is in terms of the marketing, the fund that you guys use, that's different from, let's say, when you contract out to a local vendor or an outside vendor to produce marketing videos? Because I think y'all used to have in-house, you know,
Yes.
It's not photography, but video filming.
We did have an in-house creative services team,
Okay.
Which were designers, photographers, yeah, we had a lot of people.
Now, is that part of the request of what our dollars go to, or is this more just like the marketing association we get paid out of?
No, no, that's, it's a separate budget.
Okay, okay.
I mean, what we're requesting is destination advertising, and really will be used for advertising.
I had just been curious about a
It's not for the production, it's, production's a separate line.
I had just been curious whether y'all utilized local vendors or not, but that's a separate line item. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Just a hunch, which leads to a question. Do you think the Liberty Lounge has had an impact on, and the veteran population visiting Colonial Williamsburg has had an impact on the diversity, even though it may be anecdotal?
Given the diversity of the military, I would assume yes. I mean, we probably have, I mean, if you just think about, you know, sort of statistically, military is fairly diverse, welcoming, so that's, yeah, I mean, I would say that that probably has contributed to it.
Gotcha. Ben, you sort of touched on this, but, and I know it's a function of resources, but what are some things that other destinations are doing you would like to be able to do?
Destination-wise?
Right.
You know, it's a year-round campaign. I mean, we have to make choices. I mean, it's, okay, well, we'll do these three months, and then not do a couple of months, and then these three months. You know, if you, if you turn on, you know, and public television, I mean, you'll see Asheville all over the place. Any like gardening channel, Food Channel, those sorts of things, you'll see Charleston. You know, they have a year-long campaign. That is what is needed. I mean, you, you know, think about your own lives, how busy you are. I mean, you're not waiting for the ad to come on. I mean, it comes on, I mean, and, you know, advertising is still about repetition. I mean, and you have to see it, and see it, and see it. And, you know, what you see, then, you know, obviously, you have to fill in, then you have something to offer. I would say that that's probably the biggest hurdle that we as a destination, we as Colonial Williamsburg have, is just not having the resources for that extended campaign, to be in front of people, and they're ready to pay attention. And that's, that's the problem, and it's up to them. And if you're not there when they're paying attention, it's just the next, it's the next person that's in front of them.
That's all my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So this takes us to the end of our agenda. The next item would be adjournment, but I believe, Mr. Foster, you have something for us.
I'm sorry, but I do. Moved to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one property matter per subpar paragraph three regarding acquisition of property for city facilities, of which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining negotiation strategy of a public body.
Second.
Mr. Trivett, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 We will take a brief recess and reconvene in closed session.